Senator, when you're behind, we left off with you on Bill 107.
Madam Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity again on Bill number 107-31COR. Madam Speaker, if I may, just move to set this bill aside right now. I do know that a couple of my colleagues were wanting to speak in this bill, and I know that there may be an amendment or could, there could be an amendment. And if I may, just to give opportunity to my colleague who's working on something right now, we could just move to set this bill aside and come back to it when all the amendments are in order. So if I can beg the indulgence of my colleagues here to give me this opportunity just to set it aside just for a little bit.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. We will move on then, and mark on your agenda that this will be set aside until later. And we're going to move on to the next bill, and I recognize Senator V.A. Ada on substitute bill number 114.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Thank you. Madam Speaker, I move to place substitute bill 11431 into the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on the bill, please.
Yes, Senator, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the intent of substitute bill 11431 is quite simple. The first major provision is that if federal funds are available to cover the cost of mitigation and utilities relocation for federally funded road construction projects, then those funds should be used for those purposes. And the second provision on 11431 is that if a utility must remove an asset from a government right of way, that it must be for cause. Madam Speaker, prior to this last round of federally funded road projects, the Federal Highway Administration routinely paid for relocation of utilities. These utilities included the power poles, water lines, sewer pipes, telephone and cable wires. And during the last provisioning of federal highway funds, a former DPW director and assistant AG found a loophole in Guam law that defined these utility assets as encroachments. Guam law says that encroachments must be moved at the owner's expense. And the intent of this particular law is to address those assets that was placed on right of ways without the permission of DPW, such as a fence, a sign, et cetera, things of that nature. And for the most part, the utility assets are permitted. The utilities pay a fine in exchange for the rights to use Guam's right of ways. Substitute bill 11431, it's a combination of both the original bill 114 and bill 28. And during the hearings on both bills 28 and 114, the utilities testified that the current road projects and anticipated road projects could add between 10% to 30% to existing power, water, sewer, telephone, cable, and internet rates if the utilities are forced to pay for the relocation costs. And depending on the number and type of services that a household uses, this could mean an increase to about $30 to $100 on combined utility bills for our people. Madam Speaker, and since March of last year, utilities began incurring these extra costs that they never incurred before. And what's even more troubling is that the utilities had to find out from the FHWA that at the urging of DPW, that they will no longer be using federal monies to cover these relocation costs. Madam Speaker, bill 114 does two things. First, in the event that federal funds are available, that they be used to cover the relocation costs of the utilities for the mitigation costs to the affected business owners and residents. And two, if there's a need to remove a permitted asset from Guam's rights of way, that cause must be established. Madam Speaker, colleagues, I ask you, please, this is a bill that would essentially help our people to keep our utility costs down. If there's federal monies available to mitigate and relocate these utility assets, that we use those federal monies for these purposes and incur the, and not pass on the cost to our residents. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the bill 114? Speaker Pangolin, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about, I guess, the evolution of the bill. In discussing bills with the interested parties, the only relief they were seeking would have been granted in section two of the bill, which would allow then the relocation of the utilities, which may be authorized by law and covered by federal grants, to be paid for by the federal grants. And then, I wasn't sure about where all the other provisions of the bill that such substitute comes from. My concern with some of the areas here, for example, is that it, if I read it correctly, and I'll be certainly happy to be corrected, but if I read this correctly, it seems like then, if federal funds are not available, that we can use local funds. And given our financial conditions, I'm just not sure that that's, you know, something that we can afford to do on behalf of these private utilities, even on behalf of the government. So if that's not correct, then I certainly look forward to the response from the author on that. Is there anything in here, maybe I'll ask the author to yield a question, is there anything in here that would allow or even permit the expenditures of local funds for the relocation of utilities, both public corporations or private companies, that may be occupying the rights of ways with their infrastructure?
Senator Ada, you, you to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, thank you. The, we, we would be placing an amendment in that would take away the local funding side, and that would just keep to the federal funds, so that any, because a lot of these highway projects are federally funded, and we would just use federal funds for the projects that are federally funded and provided for, that they are available from the FHWA.
Senator, are you satisfied with the answer?
Yes. Would that, I mean, is the way to accomplish that then, just to delete everything after section two? Or are the other elements essential to allowing the use of federal grants for the relocation of these utilities? And all of these other Part II, Section 531, and the addendums, are they kind of not necessary for the authorization that would be required to allow the use of the federal grants? Or are these necessary and integral to the section two of the bill, which would just authorize the use of these federal funds?
These are necessary, Madam Speaker, so that it would determine which are permitted encroachments. And this is a combination of both bill 28 and 114, so that it defines what the encroachments are as for, so that you'll be able to utilize federal funds.
Thank you very much. I'm kind of wondering why, why we would then, like on section two F, on page two F, why we are saying that the permities for this purpose, for purposes of this chapter, are owners or lessers of a permitted encroachment. Are we, I don't see where we are then charging these companies for occupying the encroachment, which is the right of way. So why are we giving them, why are we conferring ownership on them or lessers if, is there a requirement then that they pay for the use of these rights of ways if we're conferring to them owners or lessers of the encroachment?
Madam Speaker, I believe that the, the utilities, they do pay a fee in exchange for the rights to use Guam's right of ways, and that the fees have been appropriated to the Historic Preservation Trust.
Senator, did he answer your question?
Yes. I don't, okay. And what is that fee? How is the fee set?
I'm not exactly sure how the fee schedule is set up on that, but I do know that they do pay a fee for, for the use of the rights of way.
For pay, I thought it was GP, only GPA that charged a per pole attachment, and that the other utilities did not pay for as a lease on these rights of ways. Am I mistaken again?
Do you have the answer for that, Senator?
I, I don't have the answer to that. We can, we can just take a one-minute recess, and we can find out exactly. That way, we can get the, the good senator's questions answered.
Okay. We're going to take a recess then.
Speaker Banglin, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, you know, again, the question, of course, has always been that, you know, if somebody else is able to pay for something, then the idea is somebody gets something for free. And so what the original intention was, if the federal government's going to pay for the cost of relocation, then these private companies, as well as GPA, GWA, will get the relocation for free. And the theory is, of course, that they're going to hold their rates. And we just kind of never know what that would be. I do want to just make some, a couple of amendments in the bill to reflect, I think, when that, the original intent of only allowing this when the federal government will subsidize the cost of that relocation. And where I find areas in the bill that kind of put the local government on the hook, I find those areas in page four, on line three. For example, where it says, "WAVE TO THE EXTENT THAT THERE ARE LOCAL GOVERNMENT AND/or FEDERAL FUNDS AVAILABLE OR ACCESSIBLE FOR SUCH PURPOSES." And I would just make a motion to delete "local government and/or" in that line. Page four, line three.
Okay.
So that the sentence would read, "WAVE TO THE EXTENT THAT THERE ARE FEDERAL FUNDS AVAILABLE OR ACCESSIBLE FOR SUCH PURPOSES." And the same phrase appears on line nine, page, same page, page four, where it says, "Requesting local government and/or federal funds in connection with such construction." And my motion would once again be to delete "local government and/or," so that it would read, "Requesting federal funds in connection with such construction."
And seventeen or so.
Line seventeen also has that, as well as line twenty-four, where it says, "Paid for by local or federal funds," would be just "paid for by federal funds," and remove that, "local or," and on line twenty-six, once again, "or local funding," and that line would be moved and deleted. And so those would be my amendment, which maybe seem multiple amendments, but they all relate to having the bill only be available for federal funds for this subsidy, that local funds will not subsidize these. So that would be my one, my amendment, Madam Speaker.
So on the amendment, hearing no objections, so ordered.
The other amendment I'd like to make, Madam Speaker, is that we would like to know then just how much of these federal funds are being used to subsidize either the government utility or the, or the local utility company that provides, private utility company that will be subsidized by these federal funds. Because as you correctly point out, Madam Speaker, if we have $100 million, and many of the members of the body also feel the same way and understand it, that if we have $100 million to pay five miles of road, and it costs, you know, $10 million a mile because of all the infrastructure, and it costs us $10 million to relocate those utilities, then we're only going to pave nine miles of road instead of 10, because 10 million would go to relocating utilities. And so the government, the people of Guam will get 10 miles less of road, the utility companies and the private cable companies and other users that have infrastructure in those roads would benefit to the tune of $10 million in subsidy. And we should really expect then a $10 million reduction in our rates, because that's a cost that they don't have to pay, or that there'll be no rate increase for whatever their share of. So I would like to know exactly how much of the federal funds. And so I would like to, to put an amendment here that the Department of Public Works shall report to the Magalhain Guahan, the Speaker of the Legislature, and the Office of the Public Auditor, and the Office of Finance and Budget, all federal funds used to subsidize relocation of any utilities associated with construction of roadways using federal funds. So that every time somebody applies for it, so that we know, for example, if MCV is requesting a $1 million subsidy for relocating it, or 100,000 or 10,000, whatever their cost is, if GTA's saying, "Well, now we have to relocate, and it's going to cost us this much, and we're basically applying for the federal funds to pay for that cost of relocation," so that we can judge ourselves, are these companies really then not passing on these costs to the consumer? We'll never be able to tell, because they can say, "Oh, it's not the relocation that's raising our rates, it's buying new trucks," or "It's pay raises for employees to keep up with inflation," or any other cost of doing business, except for that cost of relocating the utility. So all other, but we at least want to know how much of infrastructure improvements that could be paid for are now being diverted to subsidize this program. And I think the people of Guam and the policymakers within this government needs to know that to make that decision, should we, should we continue this? Are we really getting these companies, are they really passing on these costs, avoided costs, to the consumers by holding their rate increases? And I think we've seen some of them over the years. I mean, they don't raise their rates that often, actually, in some instances, but when they do, then we at least know how much money we've contributed to them and given them free service and free money, basically, and still they need to raise their rates. And so I would like to, to make that amendment to require that report.
So we're going to have to take a recess to have you prepare your amendment and exactly where it should be in the bill. Have the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amendment's been passed out, and basically it's that reporting requirement that I had discussed, and it would be add a section three, which would add a new 53108 to chapter fifty-four of Title V. And it would be, "The Department of Public Works shall report to the Speaker of Ilasla Turanguahan and to Imagalahi all utility relocation costs that are authorized or allowed by the grantor of federal funds and allocated by DPW for relocation expenses related to highway and road projects." And so, again, Madam Speaker, I, I wanted to ensure then that the people of Guam at least will be made aware of how much of infrastructure improvements we may be foregoing because of the need to pay for the relocation of these utilities, and that we can then take a look at it as this project proceeds and this program proceeds. Are we in fact, and are the utility companies and the private utility companies or private telecommunications companies that are saying that this program will ensure that they don't pass on additional costs to their consumers? And so we want to know, if we give them $50,000, are they, you know, in fact going to hold the line on, on rate increases? We may never know, but certainly we will know how much money we're giving them, and whether or not it really is worth it at some point in the future to continue to subsidize their relocation, given their history and their record, for increasing costs to the consumer. And we can decide that, you know, it's not worth it. They tell us they're not going to increase their rates, but we give them a million bucks and they still increase the rates. We might as well say that, you know, it's not working, or it is working, but at least we will have the information to decide that. I did want to add to not only the Speaker and Imagalhain Guahan, but also to the Office of the Public Auditor and, and the Office of Finance and Budget of the Legislature. So I wanted to amend the amendment to include those two entities as receiving the reports as well.
So on the amendment, first to the amendment, which is to include OPA and OFB, no objections, so ordered. On the main amendment, now asked amended, anyone like to speak on it? On the main, okay. Senator Blasher recognized.
Oh, wait, I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry. On your, yeah, we did, yeah, oh, yeah, no, we did the amendment to the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, while I, while I stand in support of the amendment, and I think that is a good tool for accountability, I also want to make an amendment so that we can capture the full intent of the legislation and add the words where it says, "And allocated by DPW for relocation and after relocation or before relocation for mitigation and relocation expenses."
For mitigation and relocation?
It says, so in front of relocation, mitigation and.
Okay, on, on the amendment, someone want to speak, no objections to the amendment for mitigation, so ordered. Anybody else would like to speak on the main motion? Okay, no one, so Senator, you are recognized then. On the amendment, your amendment to close?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I maybe just want to add, because the utilities are governed by the PUC, I think it would be useful for the PUC to get this report as well, since they would look at and examine rate increases by any of these utility companies that are governed. So it may be out of order, but notwithstanding the rules, the House rules, can I just add PUC also as well to those that will be receiving the reports?
Notwithstanding to include PUC to receive these reports, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the other area that I kind of have some concern with is section three of the bill, 53103, permit terms.
Oh, wait, so that was just amendment, so you're still.
Yes, I'm done with that amendment.
Yeah, okay, I wanted to call for the vote for now with the actual amendment. So the amendment then that has been amended, the main amendment, any objections, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the other area that I kind of wanted to kind of vet out a little bit more is 53103, section three of the bill that is proposing to amend, 53103. And I'm a little concerned about the, the fact that these permatees may be given an opportunity to hold up progress on the construction of the roadways, that the way that this section is written, that right now DPW can say, "Look, we've got to do these things, you got to move, you got to relocate this, and, because it's costing us $10,000 a day or whatever for any delay that we have." And the utilities can kind of dilly-dally a little bit and say, give any kind of reason, and then if they don't want to, then they're given like 30 days, you know, to, the DPW must give them 30-day notice on this issue, so we're now sitting there waiting for 30 days before we can continue working on the road project. In addition, what happens is then these permatees are given the opportunity to appeal to the PUC. I don't understand why and for what purpose we're giving them an appeal to the PUC. The PUC is a regulatory body for the setting of rates. Why are we now getting PUC involved on letting these permatees appeal to PUC for a decision that DPW needs to make with regards to moving the project forward? So I'm a little concerned about, about that and, and the effect it may have on the progress of the work, and just the appropriateness of saying that, you know, when DPW tells you, you need to relocate, you can say, "No, I don't want to," and then go appeal to the PUC. Or DPW yanks your permit for encroachment application, because you're not cooperating or you're not working with them, and you go to the PUC to, the way I read it, kind of appeal to them for the purpose of getting your permit revoked. I, I don't understand why we're injecting the PUC and appeals process for those issues, if I read this correctly. And so I would just, you know, Madam Speaker, just take out this, "The permatee shall have an opportunity to file an appeal of a revocation by a DPW with a Public Utilities Commission," because I just don't feel that's the proper role of the PUC, that, you know, we're talking about schedules and contracts and so forth, and now we're going to say the PUC can overrule DPW on those matters that are not related to rates whatsoever. And so for that, for that purpose, I would like to make an amendment to repeal, I mean to remove from line 25 the sentence that begins with, "A permatee shall have an opportunity," and ending on line 27, 12029. Okay. And, and where that, and if that amendment would pass, then it would affect and obviate the need for keeping section six on page five, and that would be the next motion, if this motion should pass, to also delete section six, 101, on page five.
So on the motion, then, on page three, lines 25 to 27, starting with "A permatee," then all the way down to the end, 27, motion to delete. No objections, so ordered. And then, so since that passed, then the other motion would be to delete section six. On that motion, no objections, so ordered. Yes, section six and the page three, the last three lines. As, yes, Speaker Banglin, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the body for listening to me and, and, you know, working on some of the concerns I had with this bill, and I want to thank the author also for being gracious in terms of working on the amendments that's been offered on the floor. And those conclude my comments on the bill. Thank you very much, Ms. Massey.
You're very welcome. On the motion, I have an amendment, Senator Tom Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, of course, I rise in support of the bill and with the amendments that have been made to it so far. I do have a couple more amendments I would like to make. I've passed out an amendment, it has to do with the definition on page two of the word "betterment." And please, it's been pointed out that I, I guess when we printed out the amendment, I cut and paste, and so below the line there, you'll see about one, two, three, four, fifth line down, it says, "A staff member or available responsible adult." If you please just delete that, those last two lines.
I could say, this is not germane.
But actually, I'm, I'm glad that that was put in there, because it shows that the members are in fact reading the amendments. Thank you. So, so the, so the tactic did work. But, but seriously, Madam Speaker, I, I would like to make the amendment here to tighten up the definition of betterment, and basically to change it so that it reads, "Betterment means any upgrade to permitted or permitted temporary encroachments that is not attributable to a highway construction project or is made solely for the benefit of and at the election of the utility. Betterments include, but is not limited, to relocation of aerial facilities underground." So this particular definition actually comes into play when during the course of a highway construction, we have to relocate a utility. Let's say, for example, Guam Power Authority, now we have to move their power lines, their aerial power lines, from the left side of the road to the right side. And so Guam Power sees this as an opportunity to now go underground, put in conduits, and, and of course, it would improve the strength and the effectiveness, the reliability of that infrastructure. That part where you actually then want to put it in a conduit underground, that's a, that's a betterment, and that comes at an additional expense. So normally, in considering the use of federal funds, if it is allowed for the relocation, it normally would not include betterments. And so we just want to tighten up that language, and that starts on page two, that's actually on page two, lines, I'm sorry, I have, I put down 17 through 20, it's supposed to be lines 21 through 23.
Okay, on the amendment, which is on page two, lines 21 to 23, on the motion, Speaker Banglin, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I see the rationale on this, but I'm just now even, now concerned about allowing these upgrades to the utilities, because now we're kind of going beyond the federal program and, and taking more money out of the project. I mean, going from aerial to underground, if you listen to GPA, they can tell you, it may be six times more costly. I'm not sure what that number is, but I've heard them say that to relocate a power line and go from aerial to underground can be anywhere from six times to 10 times the cost. So now, instead of nine miles of road, we may only have five miles of road. And do we really want to do that? Again, it's, without knowing any of the real cost of this, we are now going to just use federal highway dollars that may now be, cost us more to improve the utilities than it does to improve the roads. And that may be too much for us to give. So, and I think maybe that's why the federal program limits it to just the relocation costs and not the betterment, because they don't want to eat too much into what the purpose of those grants are, and that is really for the improvements of the road system. So I don't really, I, I don't disagree with the concept, I just, I, I'm concerned about the impact.
Madam Speaker, this point of information.
Senator, please state.
If the speaker would yield.
Sure, Madam Speaker.
If, if one goes to page four, on line five, it says very clearly, "All costs of betterments shall be paid by the owner of such infrastructure." So that's why I wanted to tighten up the language of betterments, because in that particular part of the bill, it says very explicitly that the costs will be borne by the owner.
I see, and I think that I certainly appreciate that, and it really, it does address my concerns, and I think that I had not been focusing on that section. So Senator Ada and I are on the same page, and I think we have the same concern. Yes, and, and we have the same concern, I think, is that we don't want to take too much away from the, from the intent of the dollars, so.
Can we take a brief recess? Because there's a difference here.
No, no, no.
Utility and non-utility.
Yeah.
So we got to tighten that up.
That's right.
So can we take a brief recess, please?
It's only for the private infrastructure?
No, actually, there's an amendment that I wanted to make.
Do we need a recess? Okay, we're going to recess.
Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, although Senator Adda and I both agree, the language don't agree with what we agree on. So, on page five, line four.
We have to finish his amendment, you're speaking on his amendment?
That's right. And so, I'm just wanting to say that.
Or to show the court.
That he also recognized that the language doesn't agree with what we agree on, and that there'll need to be an amendment to line five of page four after we dispose of his amendment, so. I just wanted to point that out.
So, on the, on the amendment, Tom Adda's amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. And Senator Adda, you still have the floor.
All right, so, Madam Speaker, we've tightened up the definition of betterments, and with that, I'd like to move on to the, to page three, section three, under the title "Permit Terms." And you'll see there, on lines 16 and 17, it says that "Any permit issued under the provisions of this chapter may provide that the permitee will pay the entire expense of replacing the highway in as good condition as before for repairs made to a permitted encroachment." The concern that I have with the language as it is written is that, first of all, that the provisions may provide, and I think it should be prescriptive, the provisions shall provide that the permitee will pay the entire expense of restoring the highway. So, the first amendment I would like to make is to change the word "may" to "shall."
On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
The second amendment I would like to make is right there on line 17. It reads that the permitee will pay the entire expense of replacing the highway. I would just want to change the word "replacing" to "restoring."
On the amendment, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Now, where it really gets a little bit more critical is that, "Replacing the highway in as good a condition as before." The problem that I have with that is, let's say maybe it was just a gravel top road, or, I don't know, maybe, maybe the condition of that was not as good, but we want it restored. So, basically, it's kind of like, well, it looked messed up, so I'll restore it to the original messed up condition. And I think probably something more definitive is that it should be restored according to department standards. If it's right in the middle of the travel lane, or the, you know, the asphalted part of the highway, that asphalt that's been dug up should be replaced using the standards. They have a certain recipe for how the asphalt is to be mixed, and that is what should be put in there. So, I think maybe that the phrase "in as good as, in as good condition as before" is probably a little too vague, and probably should be, should be replaced to say, to restore the highway to department standards for repairs made to permitted encroachments. So, that's my amendment, Madam Speaker.
Well, I was just gonna say, because I was looking at Bill 62, where Senator Palacios' bill actually talks about that, that to be area, to be repaired, to meet the department's standards.
Right. So, this will be consistent with what was in Bill 62. And finally, Madam Speaker, on page four.
One second, wait, wait, that's gonna be where it says, on line 17.
On page three.
Yes, on page three. So, it's restoring the highway, and what's your exact words?
To department's standards.
To the department's standards.
And delete the phrase "in as good condition as before."
And delete "in as good condition as before." So, on the amendment, which is on page three, line 17, after the word "highway," have the words, rather, delete "in as good condition as before" and replace with "to the department's standards." No objections? So ordered.
Finally, Madam Speaker, on page four, on lines one through four, this particular paragraph basically provides that when a permitee goes in to repair an existing infrastructure, you know, it's part of, it's part of your operations, that then, that to the extent that there are local government or federal funds available or accessible for such purposes, that we would use those government funds to pay for the, for restoring the highway. So, you can imagine with Guam Water Works, where the, having to dig up the roads frequently to repair water leaks, that could, that could drain the federal funds that are available for the construction of highways, if now federal highways could be made available to make those, basically subsidize Guam Water Works in the repair of the highways. So, I think that, that the cost of operating a water system, the cost of operating a telecommunications system, should include the cost of making repairs to the system, and should not then be subsidized through federal, through public funds. And so, my amendment would be to delete lines one through four.
So, the entire, on page four, lines one to four, just delete that entire paragraph. Is that your amendment?
Yes. And that, Madam Speaker, is really all the amendments that I would like to, huh?
Wait, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
But let's deal with this one first. On the motion, then, to delete lines one to four, on page four. No objections, so ordered.
And then, finally, Madam Speaker, on same page, four, line five and six, this is the sentence that talks, that makes reference to the fact that the cost of all betterments shall be paid, it should read "all costs of betterments," and delete the phrase "and relocate all nonutility private infrastructure." That should be deleted, so that then the sentence reads simply, "All costs of betterments shall be paid by the owner of such infrastructure."
On the amendment, then, with in page four, line five, to delete after "betterments" the words "and relocate all nonutility private infrastructure," and the new sentence would be "all costs of betterments shall be paid by the owner of such infrastructure." On the amendment, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Senator, can I please just make sure that the other amendments that you have proffered, that the clerk gets a copy of them, okay? Especially on page three. The ones that are easy, the "shall," "restore," but just the actual language for line 17 on page three. That's the most important. Thank you. On the, then, main motion, is there anyone who would like to speak now on the motion? Senator Adda, you may close, then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just before I close, I'd like to make one amendment on Section 5.
Section 5, okay.
And this will be down on line 24, after "federal funds." Just to insert, "When authorized by the grantor of federal funds pursuant to 5 GCA," section 54107.
Page four, line 24, "Be paid for by..."
By federal funds.
By federal funds, okay.
"When authorized by the grantor of the federal funds pursuant to 5 GCA."
I'm really gonna need that in writing.
Yes, I have it here in writing, Madam Speaker. But just to save a tree, I'll just.
Yes, we're good about trying to do that. So, it's "shall be paid for by federal funds," and I know you had other, "by the grantor." Can I please see that amendment, so that then I can call it? Oh, so it's not "when by federal funds when," okay, that's different. "When authorized," okay, "when authorized by the grantor of federal funds pursuant to 5 GCA," section 54107. And that means, then, it would be, and then we come to accept, okay, so that would stay. On the amendment, the Tony Adda amendment, no objections, so ordered. I'm sorry.
The mover of the amendment indicated that it was pursuant to some 5 GCA, whatever, whatever.
54107.
Yes. 54107. I don't know what 54107 is. Okay, all right, got it, thank you.
Good job. Okay, so, wait, let me just write this down. So, Senator Adda, then you can continue if you want to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleagues for their valuable input onto this piece of legislation. It's valuable, and the fact that we'll be able to utilize federal funds when we can, and if it's not authorized, then the holder of the utilities will pay for it on their own. We're just trying to make use of what we can from the, from federal funds and save our people some money. But I'd like to thank all my colleagues for your valuable input, and I hope I can get your support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Adda. So, on the motion, then, to... So, on the motion to send Bill 114-31COR to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Bill number, I know I'm getting hungry, too. Bill number 118-31COR, recognize the author, Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Speaker.
Good morning.
My move to place Bill 118 in the third reading and be allowed to discuss it?
Yes, please continue.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, during the past year, we have seen an alarming increase in water-related tragedies involving the loss of life at popular, at our local popular beaches. These tragedies might possibly have been avoided with the presence and assistance of a lifeguard on duty. The Department of Parks and Rec is severely constrained in their ability to hire individuals for critical lifeguard positions, which play an integral role in providing a safe water environment. Parks and Rec currently have 76 seashore parks, to include two public swimming pools, one in Agania and one in Dedido, which is under their responsibility, the majority of which do not have lifeguards on duty due to budgetary constraints, Madam Speaker. There are only about 12 lifeguards stationed at four, four of the most popular sites, Ipau Beach, Matapeng, the Agania Pool, and of, as I mentioned earlier, the newly opened Dedido Pool. The use of our beaches and pool is increasing, you know, and so, you know, this, it's increasing, and which, which is good. I mean, people are taking their families out more and spending more time in the beaches. But the tragedies are likewise increasing, and a means to protect our people while we enjoy our resources must be sought, and I believe this to be an appropriate means to address this situation. The spirit of volunteerism, Madam Speaker, for public service is strongly evident in our community. Our people have been known to give their time and efforts willingly. In keeping with this spirit, I believe we can bring people to the forefront in providing water safety services, much as the CAPE program under the Guam Police Department. You know, the CAPE program have greatly supplemented public safety demands and services against crime. This proposed volunteer lifeguard program is premised on this successful model. People want to volunteer, but there's no, but there must be an appropriate legal authorization by which they must do so, Madam Speaker. And so, Bill 118 establishes this lifeguard volunteer corps within Parks and Rec, and gives them the statutory authority to make it happen. There is one section here, Madam Speaker, that I'd like to make a technical amendment. It is on page, page five, section seven, under allowance, and it goes on to page six. Page six, on line three. It says here that, and I'll read, "Each member of the volunteer lifeguard program who successfully completes probationary requirements established by the department and who contributes a minimum of 42 hours or more per month shall receive an allowance of," and it says here, $250. I'm gonna strike two, and replace it with three, and it should be, it should read $305. Yes, and so that, what this is, Madam Speaker, is that it gives a small allowance to the volunteers. This is modeled on the CAPE program, where for every hour, if you reach the threshold of 42 hours, it's a minimum, it's minimum wage, that's what it is. So, it's our current minimum wage times the 42 hours, and that's the small allowance that is given to them. And, you know, this also provides that the department shall identify funds within their department appropriations to satisfy the intent of this section, and really, you know, being cognizant of the fact that, you know, our financial situation is very tight, I believe that the department, in having this volunteer program, will benefit them and the public, and they should be able to find the means to make this work, Madam Speaker. And so, that's the amendment I'd like to offer, and ask my colleagues to please support this legislation. Thank you.
So, the amendment, then, is to increase from $250 to $305 per month. On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered. On the, on the motion, the main motion, I have Senator Palacios and then Speaker Pangene.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of Bill 118. I would like to make an amendment, it's an addition, actually, with respect to accepting without having to go through training, selection, and recruitment, those that are currently certified by the Department of Parks and Recreation, they are the certifying authority for lifeguards of the hotels, for example, and other private entities, so that this already manpower. If we're able to accept that readily, that would, that would be very helpful, because then you cut down on the training, the orientation, because this is just basic lifeguard duty, which they... which they're currently perform, performing, and are required by law to be certified by the Department of Parks and Recreation. This is the enforcement authority on lifeguard duties and functions. But we cannot, of course, not do background check on this. For private certification of a lifeguard, I don't know whether police clearance is required, but we have to make sure that that's required, and that's the only thing probably, that we have to make sure that they submit that. But with respect to qualification and training, if they are currently certified, then they should be just accepted at that, I mean, that's, that's... And I don't have this written amendment, but that is lacking in this bill, and that would probably, is, is one that is very necessary. If I may have a time, or we come back to this, or we bookmark this and come back, with that amendment, I would like to do that.
Senator, I will go on to the next speaker while you prepare then an amendment.
Thank you.
Then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Speaker Pangolinan, you're recognized on the motion. Speaker Pangolinan. Pago, pago.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly, Madam Speaker, I think encouraging volunteerism and service to the community through programs such as this is admirable and commendable. But if we're paying them minimum wage, is that still volunteering? You know, I mean, there, we have thousands of individuals up there that go to work every day getting paid minimum wage, and we don't call it volunteer, we call it a job. So I'm a little concerned about, you know, I guess these are paid volunteers, basically, and not volunteers. The other concern I have is the, although we do say, and I'm very concerned about this, that they are functioning the same and have the same rights, duties, powers, and privileges of the regular staff, but in one area, we kind of keep emphasizing that they need to identify themselves as volunteer, they need to always represent themselves as volunteers. And are you undermined, because the lifeguard on the beach is kind of a, almost a law enforcement official, safety enforcement, and so if you keep telling everyone you're a volunteer, does that undermine your ability to command, you know, your, your duty on the beach? Or do they say, "Well, I don't have to listen to him, he's just a volunteer"? So that's one thing I'm concerned about. I want to make sure that when we put these individuals out there who do want to contribute to the community, that they carry the same authority, if, if our intent is to ensure that they carry the same authority, the same powers, and the same enforcement ability to enforce the rules of the beach, or the laws of the beach even, that we don't undermine them by saying, "You're just a volunteer." And so I just want to balance that section of the bill here that reinforces to these volunteer lifeguards that they need to ensure that everybody knows they're a volunteer, and that that will not have a negative effect on being able to command, compliance with the safety rules and regulations of the beach. And so that, that's, that's really my main concern. I don't know how do we do that? You know, put volunteer lifeguard with all authorities on their T-shirt? But I think, to me, it's enough of a concern to just put it on the record and try to ensure then that when the Department of Public, when the Department of Parks and Recreation puts its rules and puts its regulation, that they consider that, that that is something that is of concern, that's something that they could, should consider. Maybe the way to do this is to require that a volunteer lifeguard shall always serve with a regular lifeguard on the beach, so that you do have that ability. And if it's to supplement manpower, then, you know, you kind of supplement it with a regular lifeguard, and that a volunteer lifeguard shall not be assigned as a single individual in a station, you know, for, for, for that purpose. Maybe that's the way we need to ensure then that these individuals will always be able to have somebody along with them that can command without any denigration of their authority on that beach. So I don't know that I want to make that as an amendment, but I do want to say, and maybe place it on the record, that that's a way that they can ensure then that, that this is not to supplant, but this is to supplement manpower on the beach, so that these lifeguards, maybe, we may be placing them in a precarious predicament by putting them on the beach all by themselves at a station, and, and then run the risk of not having them be capable of, because of the need to continually identify themselves as volunteer, command their adherence to the safety rules and regulations on the beach. So that's really my, my, some of my concerns with this. I was looking to see, there was a, some concern at the public hearing I voiced about granting these individuals protection and their liability. You know, I, I think if they're volunteering and we're giving them the authority and so forth, that, that we should indemnify them then from, you know, as we would a regular lifeguard who has the same duties, powers, and authority when serving and on the job. So I was kind of trying to see whether that issue had been addressed in here, and I'm, I didn't do a close enough reading to, to ensure that, but I do want to, to voice also that one issue that, I, I think that if it's not in here, then I would like to propose an amendment that when these individuals are on the job, called up to duty, placed in a station, that the exercise of their authority pursuant with statutes shall, you know, extend to a granting, a coverage of liability for their actions functioning as official volunteers in carrying out the duties of the position. And I think we need to provide these individuals with that same protection. They deserve it if they're serving in that capacity. And, you know, it, it would be the same as any other, if it's negligence, if it's criminal, then they're not indemnified, but if it's carrying out their duties and responsibilities of the position, then I think they should be indemnified, so.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinan. I'm sorry, I just assumed the, the chair, and were you speaking on the Palacios amendment, or were you speaking on the main bill? Okay, then I'll take that as an amendment, and would, would you author, would the body have any problem with having legal counsel put the indemnification provision in? Is there an objection to an indemnification provision being included and to authorize the legal counsel to write the, the appropriate language? Hearing no objection, legal counsel is authorized to include an indemnification. Thank you very much for that recommendation, Senator Pangolinan. Any other senators wish to be heard on the bill?
Senator Ada, then Senator Mabini.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The author would just yield to a question.
Please, go ahead and post a question.
Page 4, line 14. It's, I'm sorry, line 13, number 4. Training must reinforce the volunteers, that they must always represent themselves as volunteers. I mean, if a lifeguard, regardless whether they're a volunteer or not, I think, and I believe that, you know, they just should be identified as such as a lifeguard. Is, is there a reasoning behind identifying themselves as a volunteer lifeguard?
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. No, I, I guess, you know, that's something that, you know, as a matter of just making sure we inform, you know, the individual that, you know, the person who was assisting them in the beach or the pool, you know, is, you know, is a volunteer, and not necessarily, you know, meaning that they are less qualified or, you know, less competent to assist them, but, you know, it's just, it's just a means to, to make it very clear from, you know, from the onset that, you know, they are a volunteer lifeguard on duty.
Senator Ada, is that sufficient?
We can just take a, make a, maybe a one-minute recess real quick.
All right. We'll take a short recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I've cleared it up with the author, and he's gonna just make a small minute to that. Thank you.
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and if, line 13, oh, I'm sorry. It's line 13, we can just strike out item 4, and just to remove that, "Training must reinforce to volunteers, that they must always represent themselves as volunteers."
Any objection to the amendment striking number 4? Any... Anyone wish to address the amendment? Any objection to the amendment? Hearing no objection, item 4, "Training must reinforce to volunteers, that they must always represent themselves as volunteers," is struck. Anything else, Senator Ada? Senator Mabini, you're recognized.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. If, I have just a few questions if the author could deal to the, the questions. I just wanted to clarify, will we be expecting the department to determine the age limit? And if so, because I know that in other states, you know, there are minors who sometimes volunteer to, to be lifeguards at their community pool, so I'm wondering whether this is a place where it should or could not be? And if that's, and, and if in fact we could allow minors to do, you know, adult minors to be, to participate in this volunteer program, would, would we include their service hours, if they're not paid, as part of their service learning requirement, graduation requirement, which, which is going to be required for high school graduates?
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, part of the, the bill here sets it up where the department must put rules in place, you know, go through the rulemaking process. I would believe that whatever the, the age is now, that is acceptable to, you know, for volunteers would be used, you know, the same way for volunteers. So, you know, as, to me, as long as they have these qualifications that the regular lifeguards on duty have, you know, I would think it would just mirror, it would just mirror that.
On the second part of her question about whether or not the hours that they spend could or would be attributable or to their service learning.
Yes, and, and I think perhaps that could be inputted here, that in the event that they are, you know, this is related to previous legislation regarding service learning requirements for graduation, that this could be counted, hours put toward this volunteer work could be put towards their service learning hours.
Sure, I have no problem with that, and, you know, if you look at page 5, line 24, you know, that the volunteers shall earn recruitment credit for services performed as volunteers. So that's, that, you know, that's there, and if you, if there, if the senator would like to put, make an additional language for that, then I have no problem.
Okay, I'll make an amendment, I'll, I'll submit an amendment.
All right, the chair will recognize Senator Mabini after you prepare the amendment, after you... But I'll hear Senator Blas, and then I'll come back to you with your amendment, please. Is that okay? Senator Blas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you know, going through, through this legislation, and first off, I'll say that I appreciate the fact that we're, this legislation tries to establish a core of volunteers for, for lifeguards. My concern, Mr. Chair, is when do we go from volunteer to employee? You know, the last time I checked, volunteer is an individual who provides the, and provides services willingly and without, in, in most cases, without any expectations for, 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 for payment. When we get, start to get into the payment structure here, and also in recognition that, you know, an individual may volunteer their services for, for an excess of 42, 42 hours, then we start to get in a stipend, stipend à la payment, and provide other services. And I recognize, and I, while I agree and I appreciate, I agree that there should be some indemnification for the action they take in performance of those duties, involuntary duties. I'm afraid that we're starting to skirt into areas where this is no longer volunteer service, this is actually paid services, and if it's paid services, we may be starting to get into violation of fair labor standards. And then what of the other individuals, of the other services where there are volunteers? Are then they gonna use this as a basis to be able to come and says, "Okay, well, you know, I am a volunteer, but I work in excess of so many hours, so therefore I should be entitled to this too"? I think we gotta, we gotta go back and, and, and let's, let's recognize, is this volunteer or not? And if it is volunteer, recognize what volunteer is. I have, again, I appreciate the intent of the legislation in being able to establish, you know, give them the authority, give them the training, make sure that they, they, they fit all these criteria before they can call themselves the volunteers. But in an attempt to try to, in these cases, defray some of the costs and everything, Madam, Madam, Mr. Speaker, an individual who only works 30 hours a week will run through the same problems in as far as maintenance and upkeep of their equipment as an individual who works 43 hours. So there is that other argument too. And so I guess what my concern is, if this is volunteer, let's make it volunteer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Senator Goethe, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, sorry. I actually support this bill, and I think it's commendable in the sense that we want to give attention to an area that's of critical importance to our well-being, both from a social, recreational aspect, and from our tourism aspect. And I think Senator Rodriguez is correct. We, we do have a shortage of lifeguards in critical areas on the island, and yet we have a lot of folks who are willing and able to volunteer to help. But I don't look at this very differently than I look at the police reserve program, the reserve program that's been set up for customs, reserve program that's been set up, or soon will be set up hopefully for the fire department and other areas. There are expenses that are incurred by, by these folks, although their uniform requirements may not be as extensive as that of a police officer as a lifeguard. I mean, their uniform is very much different than, their uniform is very different than that of a police officer. Nevertheless, there is equipment, there is equipment that they may purchase to assist them in their work, devices that are used for life-saving purposes, to augment what resources might be available at the various lifeguard stations. resources might be available at the various lifeguard stations. But I think of the cost of gasoline to travel to areas where they may be assigned. I think of the cost of maintaining physical fitness to be an effective lifeguard. I don't see a lot of lifeguards that are overweight. I see a need for a very small, what I would call an honorarium. Maybe we should change the word from compensation to honorarium, to satisfy the concerns of our colleagues here, and also indicate perhaps some language, maybe legal counsel can help, that the honorarium is intended to assist the volunteers for their gasoline expenses, their uniform expense, et cetera. That might satisfy some of the concerns that are listed here. But I think really, Mr. Speaker, we do have a precedent for this kind of thing, and in most cases, there will be required training and certification if they don't meet the certification requirements already. We're just not going to let anybody go out there and say, I'm a lifeguard, a volunteer, and help. You have to have some capability to meet the standards that are already established, and to be verified, and to undergo training if you don't have the training, and to pass the training. So I think it's very, certainly very meaningful to provide a small honorarium for the efforts of those and recognizing the sacrifices that these folks will be making to help us. And it's not really a lot of money, if you think about it. 300 and something a month, and if these folks put in a weekend, you know, they've more than earned the honorarium, if they put in four weekends or 10 days out of the month, my goodness, think if we would have to hire people to do that, and we don't have the money to hire people full-time to do that. And they will be under the watchful eyes of the experienced lifeguards there. So for these reasons, Mr. Speaker, I think that on a personal basis, I'm not worried about this little honorarium, but I think we should change the nomenclature to say honorarium, and to say that this is in recognition of the expenses that will be incurred for gasoline to get to the sites that the lifeguards are assigned to, to help with their uniform expense and their gear that they may be bringing with them to be able to protect the people of Guam. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I would like to suggest that the legal counsel work out that language, if there's no objection.
It might take that to mean that you are making a motion to amend.
Yes, I'm making a motion to amend, to use the nomenclature honorarium rather than compensation or any language like that, and to also include an explanation what the honorarium is for. Thank you.
On the Gothard's amendment, who wishes to be recognized to speak on the Gothard's amendment? Did I see your hand go up, Chairman Palacios? Senator Rodriguez and then Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I thank the retiring speaker. And this, actually, this section is titled allowance, and I have no problem with calling it honorarium. This also, this section, you know, states line four, that the $305 per month is to defray the cost of maintenance of their equipment and travel costs. So, yeah, and so that's, you know, that's something that we've taken into consideration, the time, you know, and the cost it will take, you know, this individual to get from where they need to go. And also, this amount, this $305, really is if they reach a minimum of 42 hours. You know, we think that some of these volunteers would actually put in more than 42 hours, and so, you know, it's just a small allowance, honorarium, if I may, to help, you know, show, more like a small token of appreciation, is no different from the Cape Volunteers or the police reserves. So that's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Palacios, any other senators wish to be heard on the Gothard's amendment to make this honoraria instead of allowance? Senator Palacios, then Senator Mabini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I do not necessarily, I'm not going to object to the Gothard's amendment with respect to the nomenclature, but, you know, we have, of course, the volunteer reserve program for the fire department, the volunteer reserve program for the Guam Police Department. I think we have authorized the conservation officer, or rather, the customs and quarantine for a voluntary reserve program. You know, the nomenclature, the word reserve has come to, of course, it's synonymous to, of course, the volunteer. And then we have this, just personally, my perception is that it would, again, in my own personal opinion, sort of diminish the stature of, I guess, such a position. And we tried to put him, I guess, comparable, in a comparable level with other quote-unquote volunteer reserve programs that are now existing in some of these agencies. And a chance in that, I don't know whether that might be confusing to some people, but we want it understood that it's completely volunteer reserve programs of these different agencies. And actually, that is my concern. I would not object to that, but I want to share that with the colleagues here, and with respect, of course, to the allowance. It is not compensation. If right now it is legal for the Guam Police Department, then there shouldn't be any problem, because it is the same concept, the same policy, the same approach. It has nothing to do with, of course, minimum wage. It is allowance for, and it's actually a stipend, for the cost incurred by the volunteer. Maybe they have to buy their own uniform and pay for those uniforms and probably other things. Of course, there's a uniform allowance here, but probably binocular, I don't know what other accessory that they may need to make them more proficient in their job function. And so, again, I don't see any problem with the allowance that is provided here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Mabini, on the Gothard's amendment, then I'll get back to you on your amendment. Okay. Anybody else wish to be heard on the Gothard's amendment? Any objection to the Gothard's amendment amending on page four, the word allowance, and replacing it with the word, I'm sorry, on page five, with the word honorarium? Hearing no objection. Senator Mabini, on your amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. After listening to my colleagues from Chalampago and Baragada, I think I'm going to have to retract the proposed amendment, only because if it in fact is volunteer hours, which usually requires no compensation, it, service learning hours then would not be appropriate then. So I'll go ahead and retract that. I do propose, perhaps in the future, we could think about this, that if volunteers are willing to do this kind of job and forego the payment, and they are minors who are trying to meet service learning graduation requirements, then this would apply. But the way it stands, because there is compensation, I retract my proposed amendment.
Maybe in the rules and regulations, that might be the way to suggest it. All right. Anybody else wish to be heard on the bill? Senator Raspicio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. As previous speakers have mentioned, it's a really good start, and maybe what the good Senator Rodriguez is attempting to do here, and I hope that we collectively join in on this effort, is to ignite the tourism industry, to maybe want to partner with the Department of Parks and Recreation, to maybe have some kind of fundraising drive, or to provide the financial resources as a segue into making sure that these honorariums are backed up by actual cash. I support the bill, Mr. Speaker, I support the intent, but I just have one issue that I'd like to bring to the body's attention. I recognize that because we're establishing a volunteer program for lifeguards, I recognize that they must receive Red Cross lifeguarding certification, I recognize that they have to have the proper clearances from both GPD and the Superior Court. I recognize that this is purely voluntary in nature, but where I have some concern, Mr. Speaker, is on page five, line 22, where it's okay that we give these volunteers the same powers, duties, where I'm, where it causes me pause, is where we're also going to give them the same rights, including coverage under the Workers' Compensation Act, then in response to the minority leaders thinking, where does this, where do you draw the line from a volunteer to now being an employee? And for me, if we're going to leave this line in here, where they would have the same rights, rights as what? Rights as a classified employee of the government of Guam, and now we're saying that, God forbid, and something happens, that they'll now be covered under the Workers' Compensation Act, if we wish to go this far, then why don't we just convert this bill to a bill that would establish additional positions under the Department of Parks and Recreation, and call these lifeguards full-time equivalent classified positions hired through the merit process with the proper training? But I recognize the financial condition that this government is, so this is why this bill is a great start. But I want to move to delete the words on line five, rights, and then it says parentheses, including coverage under the Workers' Compensation Act, close parentheses. I want to remove those words, Mr. Speaker, so that we are clear that these individuals who signed up for this voluntary program are purely volunteers.
For purposes of the clerks, what page, please?
Page five, Mr. Speaker, page five, beginning on line 22.
On the Raspicio amendment, any senators wish to be heard? Senator Blas? No? Any objection to the Raspicio amendment? Hearing no objection. Thank you, Senator Raspicio. Do you have another amendment?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Any other senators wish to be heard unrecognized on the bill? Senator Rodriguez, do you wish to close? Oh, wait, Chairman Palacios.
Actually, we're supposed to put that on bookmark and to come back for that one addition where to authorize with the acceptance of privately, I guess, privately employed lifeguards who are certified by the Department of Parks and Recreation as a ready source of applicant. I'm just making just minor adjustments, it was done, but it'll be done in maybe three minutes, just coming back.
Okay, we'll take a short recess.
And then, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I apologize for the wait, my colleagues. But just passed out, it's actually a new section seven, and that is why I wanted to insert this after section six, so that it can be, I guess, properly sequenced. A new section seven is hereby added to page five, of course, with the other section to be renumbered. And it reads like this: "Participation of qualified lifeguards authorized. Privately-employed lifeguards who are certified pursuant to the requirements of law may be accepted as volunteers and shall be exempted from the qualification screening requirements contained in sections 77, 125(c) and e." And essentially, to exempt them from the training requirement and the selection requirement. And then it says, "Except that police clearance and court clearance shall still be required." And this, of course, would allow the Department of Parks and Recreation to utilize this individual without too long of a wait. After all, they are the ones that certify this. They are the certifying authority for lifeguards that's required by public health for privately-operated swimming pools such as the hotels and resorts. And so this, again, again, would just add on to, I guess, the strength and the value, of course, this bill. And that's my amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Any senator wish to be heard on the Palacios amendment? Has everybody received a copy? Senator Yamashita, you recognized?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'm curious as to the amendment that has just been proffered, that we would exempt privately-employed lifeguards from the qualification screening requirements, which are Red Cross lifeguarding certification, Guam Police Department clearance, and Superior Court of Guam clearance.
The last two are included in the amendment.
Okay. But even the Red Cross lifeguarding certification, would not we want to ensure that all, whether paid, not paid, lifeguard or not lifeguarded, honorarium or allowance, have Red Cross lifeguarding certification?
Would the author of the amendment care to respond?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. That's why, Mr. Speaker, those that are currently certified attest the fact that they already -- they have to have this. And I don't have the time now to explain what it takes to be certified by the Parks and Recs as a lifeguard for the hotel and other privately-operated pool. But I know that those are required, having, you know, had the experience of, I guess, providing security to hotels. We know that that is required. But if, for any comfort to the, I guess, to the senator, then we can just strike up see and still require that anyway. And then it's up, I guess, to the Department of Parks and Recs, that if they already have it, then they can waive that. But I do not know whether they are required to have police clearance, those privately-operated pool where they hire lifeguards. I just want to make sure, then, just to guess.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Yamashita, does that address your concern?
Not really. And I'm thinking that maybe, because I -- because if we don't know, then why would we exempt? If we don't know that the privately-employed lifeguards are certified to standards -- now, I'm thinking that they are. Else, how else would they be certified if they haven't already been, I meant, certain standards? So I would think that they are. And so then, I'm not sure if I'm doing this the right way, but I'm thinking that I -- what I'm thinking is that this amendment really wants to ensure, or to allow, that privately-employed lifeguards are allowed to be a part of the program that is being created by Senator Rodriguez. I don't have a problem with that. I just think that they shouldn't be exempted from Red Cross, and I see that the police department, this pair of courts, is not being exempted.
Okay. I've -- maybe if somebody can find that certification list, or Senator Blas, do you wish to be heard on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I have to agree with the General Lady from Tumuning. And while I also recognize the good gentleman from Ordot in his willingness and his want to make sure that, you know, that we expand the pool of volunteers, individuals who can volunteer for this program, and that there is that resource in as far as the private lifeguards. I also have the concern that while they are employed there, they may not necessarily have those qualifications that are necessary. And I agree with you, maybe there should be some way, but, you know, Mr. Chair, one of the concerns that I got is then we're talking about private lifeguards. You may have to go then into individual properties to find out what their qualification criteria is for their lifeguards, and whether or not they're mandated to have this. I think that the errand side of caution here is to include that they also have to have the American Red Cross certification in this. It would not only make sense and would help to provide consistency not only within our volunteer lifeguard service, but would actually help the private property if this, in fact, was not the criteria. Maybe this is a cause for us to be able to visit what these qualifications are and whether or not there is a certification requirement for an individual who has that title of lifeguard, whether it be in the public sector or in the private sector.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. I saw Senator Duwainis's hand up. Did you wish to speak on this? Oh, Senator Pangolinan. And if I might, if legal counsel on either side of both sides can start looking up for what the certification requirements are for lifeguards, you might be able to resolve this quickly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, if I may shed some light, only because this very issue, I've had discussions with lifeguards on the beach down in Mataping. One evening, I was there taking a walk, and I saw the lifeguards up there, and I climbed their tower and was talking to them. And one of the issues we talked about was, you know, their job and their duties, and the differences between themselves and other lifeguards which may be employed at the hotels that very specific, is that, you know, their certification requires them to be certified for, like, open water rescue, beach rescue, and things like that, whereas a person who works at a hotel may not be required to have the open water rescue and open water experience because they're dealing with just the pool. So they'll have their CPR, first aid, and all of those certifications that are required to provide, to be a first responder. But the skill levels that they may have and the requirements may not be the same in terms of the ability to function in open waters and currents and things of that nature. So the environment and the realm of where they practice their trade is different. So I think we may need to be a bit more specific in what we're going to exempt them from because, again, as you say, exactly what is it in the specs of the position and certifications required and training required? And we have to be very careful because we can't place a hotel lifeguard on Mataping Beach or down at Talafolfo Bay whose only experience have been to deal with rescuing somebody out of a pool with a controlled environment versus open ocean. So I think that those were some of the conversations we had, or I had, with those lifeguards as how different they are than other positions that may be called lifeguards that may not function in the, in those environments that they do, that they function in. So I just wanted to shed some light on that.
Do I take that to also mean an objection to the amendment without that clarification? Or can we take a few minutes?
Yeah, I think we do need to make that clarification.
Let's take a few minutes and clean up this amendment. Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move, of course, that the First Amendment be withdrawn and this be the substitute for that, so that then we will read this one, if I may. And the only change is that instead of parentheses "c," we put a "d," and that has to do with the selection process and through the selection panel, and then the EU, of course, that requiring training. But then it adds, "All other requirements for a government-employed lifeguard shall be applicable to the privately-employed lifeguard volunteer." Whatever those requirements are, open water rescue and so forth, that are required currently of a government-employed lifeguard should still apply. By the way, I have this statute here that requires hotels that operate beachfront recreation facility that they provide lifeguards with American Red Cross certification. But of course, we retain the "c" item there. They still have to submit those things. And so I hope that this would satisfy the concerns of my colleagues, and then, so I move that this version be adopted.
On the revised Palacios amendment, any senator wish to be heard on it? Any objection to revised Palacios amendment? Hearing no objection. Anybody else, any other senator wish to be heard on the bill before we go to the sponsor to close? Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Before I close, I'd just like to add an amendment to page four, line 20, to add, "After department provided sufficient funding is identified." The reason for this, Mr. Speaker, is that, you know, what we're saying, we're telling Parks and Rec that they're able, they're authorized now to go out and seek volunteers for lifeguards, and we're putting an honorarium in place now. And so what we don't want is for them to overextend themselves because, you know, we know there is a need for extra lifeguards, but we also want to make sure that when they do this, it's done within their means. And so we just wanted to make that perfectly clear with this amendment.
On the amendment offered by the sponsor, any senator wish to be heard? You want to repeat that? The clerks did not catch it.
Line 20, page four, "After department provided sufficient funding is identified."
Any objection? Hearing no objection. Give me close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I want to thank Speaker Ben for bringing that to my attention. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleagues for rising in support of this legislation. This is a start in developing this lifeguard volunteer corps within Parks and Rec. And really, it was modeled after the successful programs of the Guam Police Department, you know, with the CAPE program that is being administered there. And so I'm hoping that my colleagues vote in favor of this legislation. Thank you. Thank you.
On the motion to place Bill 118 in the third reading file, I mean, in the voting file, any objection? Hearing no objection. Madam Speaker, do you wish to rerecognize? No. All right. In light of the hour, let the chair, Will Suesponte, set us on recess until 2 o'clock this afternoon.